Good evening. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council meeting for February 20th, 2024. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. A reminder to please turn off or silence cell phones and devices before we get started. Our first item on our agenda this evening is the invocation. If I could please invite Judy Albrecht, Stake Relief Society President of the Gilbert Highland West Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. Good evening. Thanks for joining us this evening. You'll just need to push the button to turn the microphone on. I think it's the button on the right. There you go. Thank you.
Right there. Is that better?
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful together as citizens of Gilbert this evening for this town council meeting. We are grateful for our mayor and this town council and for all that they do to serve the citizens of our town that we love. And we ask this night that thy spirit can be present, that those who have come to voice their thoughts and opinions and feelings can do so peacefully and with respect, and that they can be heard and received in that same manner. We are grateful for all those who serve this community, especially those who serve to protect our safety and the first responders. And we ask a blessing on them, that they can be safe as they do their work and serve in this community. We ask a blessing on our youth who are challenged in many different ways. We pray that the teachers who work with them, their parents, faith leaders might be able to inspire and guide them in the way that thou would see fit, and that they might feel and know of their divine worth and who they are as children of God. We are thankful for our Savior, Jesus Christ. We pray that we can follow him and his example in how we reach out to and and serve and lift and build others. And we pray humbly for these blessings and give thanks for all that we have in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you sharing that invocation with us this evening. I did have council member Tilke down to do the pledge. Council member Torgerson, could I ask you to lead us in the pledge, please? Everyone, please stand and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of which we stand, and to one nation, a fair, equal, and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member. Chevelli, if you could please take the role.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Present.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Present.
Councilmember Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
And councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you so much, Chevelli. Do we have council member Tilke online or no?
She indicated she would not be attending.
Thank you. Thank you, Chevelli. Moving on to our first item on our agenda, which is presentations and proclamations. This evening, councilmember Kaprowski will be assisting with the presentation of the Green Gilbert Partnership Program for 2024, new certifications. We have staff to come on down and help with that. Have to push the right button, I think it is. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Hello, my name is Aaron Fosel. I work for the Town of Gilbert's Environmental Compliance Office with the Public Works, Public Works Division, excuse me. I also represent the Green Gilbert Business Partnership Program. I'm the coordinator for it. It's a coordinated effort between four different divisions within that Public Works Department, Environmental Compliance, Solid Waste and Recycling, Water Conservation, and our wastewater pretreatment division. It was basically founded as a way to give all the local businesses in Gilbert a way to show the community how much they care about the environment, all the efforts that they make to give back and really make a minimal impact on the environmental efforts that we do within our divisions to keep Gilbert clean and beautiful. We help prioritize changes that will have the biggest impact within those businesses, and we work with the businesses to kind of increase their sustainability goals through a tailored approach. You know, it's a very unique process, getting to know a lot of these businesses and kind of learning what sort of issues they tend to deal with more often than others. So today, we are certifying four new businesses as Green Gilbert Business Partners. And I'll have a little bit to say about each, each one of them here. First is the Uprooted Kitchen. The Uprooted Kitchen is a small, family-run, plant-based kitchen that started as a vegetarian food truck in 2012, is now located within Bar One in the Agrotopia community. A lot of their menu items are created using produce that's grown just right outside their front door, as well as from other local partners. They strive to provide our community with a beautiful gathering place to enjoy thoughtful and nourishing food. Our second business is Priority Pumping. They are a local pumping and wastewater service provider whose mission is to not only provide top-notch services in what they do, but also to educate our communities and customers about the importance of proper septic system and wastewater maintenance, something that we actually do a big part of within our wastewater pretreatment program, is trying to educate the residents of Gilbert of all the proper and safe practices about using these systems. So the fact that Priority Pumping highlights that in their mission statement is a big, is a really important thing for us. CooperVision is our third business. They are, they are a vision-based company that is committed to helping people around the world see better every day. Through a scientific and technological innovation, operational excellence, and close working relationships with eye care professionals, CooperVision has helped millions, helped improve the vision of millions and become a trusted global leader in the contact lens industry. And then our last business today is Galapagos Coffee Shop. Galapagos Coffee Shop opened in September 2021 and is bringing authentic Ecuadorian coffee and food to the Gilbert community. Founder Alexandra states, "I would like to create an environment where every single individual is treated with respect and kindness while partaking in the unique and exotic Ecuadorian handcrafted baking goods." Galapagos Coffee Shop is actually one of our first business that's going to be certified as well as part of our Local First partnership. And here to tell us a little bit more about that is Taylor from Local First.
Hello, everyone. I'm Taylor Shadron from Local First Arizona. I'm the Green Team Coordinator with them. And so I'm here to tell you a little bit about a local business coalition that really is statewide. It's for all communities, city municipalities, tribal, rural, metro, whatever you identify as. We've got something for you guys. And so we're really excited about being partnered with Gilbert because this is just another way to extend the resources and that technical assistance piece to help these businesses transition into a sustainable journey, whether they're just starting today or if they've already been on it for 20 years. So we have something for everybody. When it comes to our certification, our certification is a little bit of a self-guided questionnaire where we let the business owners do it at their own pace. And then we go out there, verify that everything that they say they're doing is there. And then at the end of it, we're able to give them a report that tells them what their best practices are and what those achievable measures are that they can start to build into their day-to-day practices as they continue that journey. And so Alexandra is just an amazing example of that. She is a genuine community leader who cares about culture and biodiversity and family and community. And she just personifies that every single day, and it shines through in the shop that she has. She has reusable cups that she likes to use, and there are her old teacups that she has. A lot of the furniture in there is repurposed and reused. It's not bought new. So you're saving materials that way. A little bit of education, and she implemented a brand-new recycling program just day one of talking to her about some things that she could do. She was ready for it and eager. And so I am beyond proud to be introducing her to you guys. And if you haven't been to Galapagos Coffee Shop, it is just on Gilbert Road, right past Elliott, depending on which way you're going before or past. You should definitely go check it out because everything there is amazing. And then, yeah, guess we got to get to the certificates.
So we'll call the businesses that are present up one by one to get their certificates and get a quick photo. So first, we'll have Alexandra come up from Galapagos Coffee. Come on up, Alexandra.
Thank you, Erin. Great presentation. Thanks for all those businesses. Thanks to Local First for coming out to be part of this presentation also. We appreciate your time this evening. Before we get started with Communications for Citizens, I just wanted to read a statement. We've had several requests about lighting of the water tower. For members of the audience here and online, please be aware that Water Tower will be lit orange tonight, Tuesday, February 20th, and tomorrow night, Wednesday, February 21st, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM to signify our community's solidarity against teen violence and in remembrance of Preston Lord, a young man who lost his life in Queen Creek as a result of a senseless crime. This council approved the redesign and renovation of Water Tower Plaza in the spring, with the demolition timeline always slated for early January. And I'm so grateful for the extraordinary efforts of our Parks and Rec team, Welling and Mark Taylor Construction, in finding a way to provide temporary power during this challenging phase of construction to bring this water tower lighting request to fruition. Water Tower Plaza remains an active construction zone with areas closed off, complete with fencing, and no public access, which prevents people from congregating. Water Tower Plaza will remain closed until fall of 2024. As we work through the different phases of the renovation process, the Parks and Rec team continues to evaluate water tower lighting requests submitted online, and the project is currently on track to conclude in fall of 2024. So the water tower will be lit this evening and tomorrow evening, orange, in honor of Preston. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. Thank you for the orange candles that were brought up here. Thank you for that. I'm going to read a short statement before we get into the comment section from the Communications for Citizens. "The Gilbert Town Council values citizen comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request to speak card for each item they wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in the bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them at the conclusion of the open call to the public. Response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. I don't want to reiterate the meeting protocol that has been posted on the screens, but I do want to take a moment to address the conduct within our public communications and council meetings. We value the participation of our community members in the robust exchange of ideas. However, it's essential that this discourse remains respectful and constructive, reflecting the professionalism expected in such forums. Misinformation and personal attacks undermine our collective efforts and do not contribute to the productive dialogue necessary for our town's progress. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to these sessions, we must remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others who may wish to speak, and detract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. As we move forward, let's commit to a standard of communication that upholds the values of respect, truth, and civility. This approach will enable us to work more effectively together in addressing the challenges and opportunities facing Gilbert. Thank you so much for your cooperation. When your name is called, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your place of residence, and begin speaking. And each one will have three minutes to speak. Our first one up tonight is Daniel Straza. He will be followed by Sarah Straza.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Daniel Straza. I am the father of the little girl who was hit by a red light runner at Freestone Park. Aside from the fact that this uninsured driver had no business being on the road, and our state officials aren't doing enough to prevent things like this from happening, it's equally troubling that there aren't helmet laws in place for minors with high-speed bikes and e-bikes in production. While the man driving illegally that blew through the red light had a huge known trail crossing with all other traffic stopped and seriously injured my daughter, will likely get off with a slap on the wrist because of the way current laws are written. While our child is wheelchair-bound and has scars all over her face, to no fault of her own, we are not protecting the people that follow the rules and do the right thing. It wasn't long ago when DUI offenders would get a, would get off with a similar slap on the wrist and fines until X amount of innocent people had to die before we took problems seriously. Well, now we have a new serious problem on our hands. With the increased traffic, lack of laws in place to punish reckless drivers, we need to come together and attack an issue that we can all get behind and swiftly protect the children in our communities. While the road ahead is long, I'm confident that my daughter is lucky to be alive due to the helmet that she was wearing that day, and I'm positive that without it, she would be dead. There are studies that prove wearing a helmet decreases the risk of traumatic brain injuries and increases the overall survival rate. I believe my daughter is a good example of that study. We see kids every day taking over intersections, riding down the roads, riding in traffic on e-bikes with no helmets, and it's a matter of time before more tragedy strikes. The fact is, drivers are in a rush. They're distracted. They aren't paying attention for kids on bikes, and many children don't know the rules of the road, nor the right of way, because they've never been subjected to formal education around this topic. There is education that needs to go into the solution, educating both parents and children on the importance of safety equipment. And I know that takes time, but we can implement a helmet law now and help protect our children now before we see another accident. Having an ordinance in place for bikers under the age of 18, regardless of the type of bike or e-bike they are operating, need to be wearing a helmet could greatly reduce the traumatic accidents. Hopefully, with council's help, we can get this to the appropriate parties to get in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Straza. She will be followed by Jennifer Wada.
Councilmembers, Mayor Peterson, my name is Sarah Straza, and I'm a Gilbert resident. If you had a chance to save a child's life...
Sarah, can I ask you to make sure you're closer? Thank you. Thank you. I just want to make sure we hear you.
Thank you. If you had a chance to save a child's life, would you take it? I stand before you today, not only as a concerned citizen, but as a mother who has witnessed firsthand the devastating consequences of reckless driving. On January 15th, my daughter, Alexandria, a vibrant seven-year-old, was struck by a red light runner on her bike. It was a harrowing experience that could have easily ended in tragedy, but thanks to her wearing her bike helmet, her life was spared. I want to stress that this incident was not the fault of my daughter. It was the result of a distracted driver. Unfortunately, incidents like these are not isolated. They happen far too often, leaving families shattered and communities mourning. Our crucial aspect that stands out from the situation that's super important is bike helmet laws. As we know, these laws vary from state to state, leaving gaps in protection for our children, and it's our duty to advocate for them and put legislation safeguards in place. In 2019, Gilbert issued a bike plan. I have it right here, and on page four, it states that the purpose was to provide safe and convenient opportunities for community members of all ages and abilities to utilize multimodal transportation alternatives. It goes on to say in 2015 to 16 that were nearly 11% increase in bicyclist fatalities. And then on page eight, it went on to say that safety is commonly provided as the number one reason that people choose not to ride a bike in Gilbert. The five-year goal in this Gilbert bike plan was to reduce the total number of crashes involving bicycles. Now, in 2024, we know due to our growing population, increased use of e-bikes, distracted drivers, this goal has not been obtained. Since we as a community have been unable to reduce the number of bicycle-related crashes, we need to implement another approach. My proposal is to implement a helmet law. I have sent you all an email last Thursday that included the bike Gilbert Plan, which outlines the strategies of promoting bike-safely infrastructure within our own town. Additionally, I attached an evidence-based research for Injury Epidetomology Journal. I also drafted proposed language for the new law that I believe aligns with our community's values and safety objectives. I please encourage you to review these materials and ask for the council members to champion this initiative together with me to save children's lives. Thank you so much for your attention and consideration.
Thank you. Jennifer Wada. Jennifer will be followed by Anne Dusset.
Mayor Peterson, councilmembers, my name is Jennifer Wada, and I live in the Morrison Ranch community here in Gilbert. It's nice to be speaking to you about something other than the ranch development. I'm here tonight to support Sarah and Daniel Straza's effort to update our laws to include bike helmet safety for riders under 18. When I was a kid in the 70s, car seats and seatbelts were not required. In fact, you could even sit in the back of your dad's pickup truck in an aluminum lawn chair that slid back and forth as he turned corners. But finally, someone started looking at the statistics and realized that car seats and seatbelts save lives, which resulted in the adoption of laws around the country. In California, the seatbelt law went into effect when I was 16, and I remember thinking that seatbelts were annoying, especially requiring my friends to use them if they were going to ride in my car. Eventually, though, we all adapted. We used them regularly, and once we were older, we understood why they were important. But it was the law that changed our behavior, and it made it easier to deal with the peer pressure when not everyone was on board. As a community, we put laws in place to protect kids so that they or their parents are compelled to make the safe choice when they might not otherwise. We don't let kids buy alcohol, weapons, or vape products. We have curfews, and while we rightly allow teens to drive, we have limits on when, and we use a graduated license. We have labor laws that protect kids from being forced to work too much or in unsafe conditions. These are all things that parents of children and teens could choose to abide by on their own, but that's not what always happens. Requiring helmets by law changes it from a parental or a personal choice to a legal decision. And just like seatbelts, people will adapt and it will become a habit. Gilbert is a beautiful town with... Gilbert is a beautiful town with so many places for kids to bike to with their family and friends, but every day I see kids riding without a helmet. I also hear stories and witness kids on bikes riding through stop signs, looking at their phones, turning on red lights without stopping, and even worse, I see distracted drivers doing the same thing, creating the perfect opportunity for accidents. How many more kids need to be injured or killed before we decide that along with the growth in population and development, we need to update our laws to protect our kids? We can't avoid all accidents, but we can help reduce the chance that our kids are severely injured or killed when they happen. Tucson adopted a helmet law for kids in 1993, and eventually Pima County as a whole adopted it. Flagstaff, Tempe, Sierra Vista, and Yuma all have bike helmet laws for kids under 18 as well. It's time for Gilbert to step up. We are supposedly one of the safest cities in the country. We need to make the protection of our kids while they're out in our community a priority. I urge you to support the Strazza's proposal and make bike helmets for riders under 18 the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Dusset. Ann will be followed by Bridget Vega.
Hi, my name is Ann Dusset. I've been in Gilbert for over 26 years. A few weeks ago, before I stood at this very podium, I sat back in my chair and I listened to the internal turmoil within the town of Gilbert. It was a revelation, uncovering things that I had no clue about. I've always loved Gilbert, I've raised a family here, I've proudly worn the "I Love Gilbert" t-shirt, I've sipped from the "I Love Gilbert" mug, I've adored my Christmas tree with the "I Love Gilbert" ornament, and I even have a Gilbert sign displayed in my home. I thought I knew this town, but with the recent challenges within Gilbert, it has shaken me to research what is really going on here. It pains me to admit that I was unaware of the turmoil simmering beneath the surface, which is now spilled over affecting the entire community. It's disheartening to witness overlooked crimes and criminals receiving nothing more than a slap on the wrist, when myself, a law-abiding citizen, is just fearful of getting a traffic violation. There are criminals that are getting set free, there are more criminals that are out there that are engaging in teen violence fights, sexual assaults, theft, and even murder. Seeing this unfold before my eyes forces me, and I'm sure, the 279,628 residents of Gilbert to question what is truly happening in Gilbert. I've been grappling with the lack of trust in our town's leadership, the lack of transparency, the desire to look good or save face rather than confront the harsh realities of our community. It deeply saddens me. When police report about making 22 arrests, it's important to clarify that it's not 22 individuals brought to justice, it's merely 22 charges, a mere checkbox to close a file. Some of those arrests came from cases that have previously been closed or characterized as inactive. The truth is, it's the citizens and the media who have pressed for action, not just checkboxes on a report. We, the citizens, know more than you might think. We see through the facade of the half-truths and misinformation. It's time for our leaders to step up and to be honest and to address the real issues plaguing our town. We deserve better than empty promises and superficial solutions. Let's work together to create a Gilbert that we can truly be proud of. Gilbert, I ask you, rise up and take a stand. Just take a stand. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Bridget Vega. She will be followed by Riza Anderson.
Riza and I are together if we can do the six minutes.
Can you do it in three minutes, the two of you together?
Three minutes each.
It'll take about five, it'll take six.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and town council. In order to get to the root cause of teen violence, we must address the elephant in the room. Where are the children getting the drugs and the guns? Media or chief? Can you please provide the community with the chain of command for local law enforcement and tell us if the narco and human trafficking unit is involved in helping look over these cases? Teens are vulnerable due to the development of their bodies and brains, which puts them at higher societal risk, and vapes are the gateway device for younger generations. We cannot turn a blind eye to the ethical and societal implications. According to a CDC study found in 2022, more than 2.5 million middle schoolers report past or present e-cigarette use. Can the town put on the teen violence website "How to Put Down the Pen" and provide addiction resources on porn, vapes, drug, and alcohol abuse, including domestic violence? Along with the canine dog, with the resource officer at schools, Mayor Bridget, and council members, you took a proclamation in January for Human Trafficking Awareness Month for to say "not in our city." When you say that, you're saying no to drug trafficking and child sexual abuse. It's happening in Arizona schools and within our backyards. When you say "not in my city," you're saying no to grooming, which is a form of sexual abuse. And if you meet the person who is grooming, you try, or I'm sorry, the person who is grooming, then you know they may try to sexually assault you, which is when they touch you in a sexual way that you don't agree with. They might use secrecy, blame, gifts, or threats of violence to stop you from telling somebody. Grooming behavior involves the perpetrator manipulating a child to gain the trust, build rapport, and exert their power over them. When you say "not in my city," that includes teen dating violence. Also called dating violence, it is an adverse childhood experience that affects millions of youth in the United States. Dating violence can take place in person, online, or through technology. It's a type of intimate partner violence that can include the following types: physical violence, sexual abuse, psychological aggression, and stalking. As suicide rates have skyrocketed, sex extortion, drug trafficking, addiction use, including the use of alcohol, vapes, weed, fentanyl, on elementary and high school campuses, and sexual assault.
Good evening, mayor and town council. Gilbert must take a stand to eradicate teen violence and stop allowing the abusers to continue to perpetrate intentional inflection of emotional distress on the youth and community due to sense acts of violence. Adverse childhood experiences are the lead contributor to what we are witnessing today amongst our youth. What are the consequences if we don't take a stand? We are witnessing it now in all of these cases. It creates unhealthy, abusive, or violent relationships, can have short and long-term negative effects, including severe consequences on a developing teen. Youth who are victims of teen dating violences or violence are more likely to experience depression and anxiety and even suicide. Engage in unhealthy behaviors like using tobacco, drugs, alcohol. They exhibit antisocial, I'm sorry, antisocial behaviors like lying, theft, bullying, or hitting. Violence is an adolescent relationship, sets the stage for future relationship problems, including intimate partner violence and sexual violation or violence perpetration and/or victimization throughout life. As I pray, Lord, I ask for protection over the youth, teen violence, victims, and survivors. Lord, may you soften the hearts of the mayor and town council and lift the veil. I also want to thank you for the tower being lit orange. I don't think two days is enough if we can have it for as long as there's justice, that would be greatly served for the Lords.
We have no future if we don't protect the children. We have a duty to protect the innocent. If not, that blood is on our hands. Together, we must rise for the children. It starts with one person. It starts with you. Stand tall, speak your truth, and the world will adjust. They cannot take your voice. It's never too late to do what's right. To the youth, I'm sorry for everything you've endured. Please know we are here for you, you are enough, your voice matters. We see you, we hear you, we stand by you, and we love you. Please continue to keep the Lord family and all of the youth who've been murdered, assaulted mentally, physically, and sexually. If we can take a moment of silence for Preston Lord and for all of the youth and those we've lost due to senseless acts of violence, rise up. If you see something, say something, do something. Thank you, Mayor Bridget. We would also like to give you an invite to light the night for the Community Walk to Honor Preston Lord, Wednesday, February 28th, at 5:30 at Chandler Unified. And we printed it out for you guys.
Thank you. Next is Dawn Edwards. Dawn will be followed by Crystal Kuhlme.
I'm going to take her time. I'll try to keep it at a tight five.
We have to keep this at three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and esteemed council members. My name's Captain Dawn Edwards. I was hired as a reserve firefighter in 97, full-time in 99. I was a captain for the last 18 years. I retired this past December after I was retaliated against for filing a complaint. I just want to let you know, for the last 26 years, my only goal was to try to make Gilbert the best fire department that we could in the valley. Sometimes that meant being an enthusiastic cheerleader, sometimes that meant being a member of the loyal opposition. I viewed it the same way I viewed my, when I swore my oath to defend the Constitution. My goal and my loyalty was for the, to the department and the citizens we serve, not necessarily any particular fire chief at any particular time. In the fire service, we refer to it as challenging the plan. I'm sure there's plenty of different corporate speak terms for the same thing. It just means that any organization will stagnate if it's, if you only promote yes-men. Innovation and progress only come from questioning the status quo. Unfortunately, the current fire management team does not take kindly to questions. Make no mistake, being critical of fire management was the real reason that I was investigated. The fire chief basically admitted that on a recorded conversation. Prior to getting a new supervisor in 2021, I had literally no issues, none. Then I was on the receiving end of gaslighting and a smear campaign. I'm not going to sit here and try to tell you that I was the best captain to ever walk to earth, but hopefully after the next few months, as I tell you the story and I relate it to things that are currently going on in the fire department, you'll come to understand. If you were to do a new employee survey like we've done in the past, you would find that most of your firefighters currently feel like they will be retaliated against, lose out on coveted position in special duties, or, as the most recent captain process shows, not get promoted if you're not looked upon favorably despite good reviews, or if you're not part of the current in-group. I know half of you weren't around when we were basically abandoned by the fire department management to figure out how to deal with COVID and during the fire chief selection process, but if you go back and read those unredacted employee engagement surveys, you'll feel, you'll find out that a good portion of the fire department feels as though their management faces little or no accountability, and having the wrong opinion can cost you. I will show you how, as a group, they continually fall short of meeting the standards for honesty, integrity, and character they set for the rest of the department. I will show you how management's actions fall far short of their rhetoric, and mostly, most importantly, I will talk about how your firefighters don't feel comfortable with their current group of management. I'm not speaking out because I think the fire department is special in any way, I'm just speaking out because I was there for 27 years, and I saw what we did when we had a good chief, and I've seen what happened when we don't. And I'm speaking out because others can't. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, thank you for listening, see you in two weeks. That was close to five minutes, that wasn't bad.
You actually, about four minutes. But it was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal, did you want to speak? Next up is Chris Brennan. Chris will be followed by Lisa Alger.
Good evening, town council members. I am Christine Brennan. I'm a resident of Gilbert. Tonight, I actually want to address the mayor's comments from the February 6 Town Council meeting. During that session, you stated that the community is dealing with the tragedy of teen violence in our community by driving hate towards the council and its leaders. The pressure you feel, it's not hate, it's the community trying to push you to get involved. To quote you, mayor, "I don't know about these events, I cannot possibly show up to something I just don't know about." The walks? Again, I can't be someplace I just don't know about. But you and I both know that's a complete falsehood, don't we? How do we know? Because the evening of December 27th, I called your personal cell phone to request police presence at that Gilbert walk. I personally invited you to join that walk, both when I asked for the police presence and when I called you back to thank you for forwarding my request to the police, who then followed up with me directly, and they sent officers to the walk. But to say you know nothing about these events, it's just false. It's false because you have been told of these events. If your staff is not passing on the information about what the community is doing, then it's your failing. If you ignore direct invitations from the public, then it's your failing. You are the leader, mayor, your staff reports to you. If they don't get you the information, then that is your failing. The other county, the town council members seem to be able to attend these events just fine. Leaders lead through action and through involvement. You don't want to participate, you don't want to be involved. You should, you should be reaching out to the community to ask us what you can do. You haven't, and you don't. You are waiting to be told to attend via public decree. That is not how leadership works, mayor. That is how royalty and figureheads work. You are neither. You complain that since 2020, people have been showing up to these meetings to push an agenda of hate, that the council should limit speech here so you can get your job done. You keep blaming others and the community for the things you don't like, instead of looking at the one big change that happened in 2020, which is you got elected. Stop portraying yourself as a victim, set upon by an unruly mob from the community. Acknowledge that you are a leader that just doesn't care, who is trying to quiet dissent, and who doesn't want to deal with any of this, and who hasn't dealt with any of this. So kindly do the right thing. Resign, let someone, anyone, take over, and provide some real leadership. Thank you for letting me go over today.
Thank you, Chris. Lisa Alger. Lisa will be followed by Katie McPherson.
Mayor, council, I won't take the full three minutes, so it'll make up for those that took a little extra time. I just wanted to simply say thank you. Lighting the water tower in orange, that beacon of light shining down across Gilbert, will continue to bring awareness to teen violence and hopefully start paving the way to take action and find justice for not only Preston, as well as all the other teen violence victims. So again, thank you, greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Katie McPherson, followed by Dan Reynolds.
Good evening, mayor, council. Preston Lord has lifted a veil. The Gilbert Water Tower will be illuminated tonight in orange for a reason. It's a call to action to stop being bystanders. Those of you that have not come to our events, I hope that you will come and show up. I can only point to a couple of you that I've seen. During a recent town hall on teen violence, Dr. Erin Crasnow, Associate Vice President of ASU, who I would love for you to consult with, said to witness- love for you to consult with, said to witness is a verb. When we witness something, we are saying, yes, I agree, do it more. And as we stood by for two years, these boys and girls and assailants certainly did it more. On December 6th of 2023, I emailed this entire dais and the chief about the runway of blitz-style assaults that I had witnessed on videos that ultimately led to Preston Lord's death. Not one of you, not one of you responded to my email. I saw something, I said something. I didn't see any of you do anything. I, I wake up every morning thinking, what can we do? I work for this town. I'm on a contract with you. I love Gilbert. I was part and lead chair of One Gilbert, and I don't see a plan ahead. Still, after all of this time, 90 days, Chuck is working his tail off with the subcommittee. That is not the answer to this. Tonight, I want to read to you a crucial voice in this, which is a child who I've never met. I've only met her online because she doesn't feel safe meeting me in person and telling me these things. The pressures East LA teens have faced are immense. The things we experience and deal with and witness on campus on a daily basis are out of this world. We want to feel safe at school, at friends' parties, at bonfires, and fast food chains. Students have been familiar with, with what's been happening since early 2021. How can we be safe at school when we're walking around in biology lab partners with somebody who killed someone? We have truly been failed. As much as I'd love to be here tonight and speak for myself as a 17-year-old, I am terrified for my safety for saying something and doing something about this problem. So many of us deal with things that take place against teens. We certainly don't deserve this. I'm asking today, council, for you to make available better resources that encourage kids to speak up. Thank you from a tremendous heroine in my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Reynolds, followed by Steve Lavelle.
Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity tonight. Some of you know me. I'm going to be redundant when I say some of this stuff, but I was a former employee here of 25 years. I'm a current resident of 35 years plus. I know how much you guys love this town, just like I do. I'm hoping the information that I put forward is getting taken seriously so we can do something about and fix some of the problems we have here. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Josh Reynolds, who is a fire department employee who was basically forced to resign. The reason he's not here to speak is because your current fire chief and your current HR director has put an injunction of harassment on him for the second time. So I wish he was here because if he was here, he would be able to explain in very good detail what's going on, but I'll do my best. Josh did a video at the fire station with another firefighter over a cup of coffee, and if you have a sense of humor, you'll laugh at it because it's funny. Somebody saw the video. They said they, they're not on social media, but somebody shared this video with them, and they were offended. This person's name is, is Jason Smith. Jason Smith said he was identifying himself as a minority, and he was offended. Our former fire chief, Jim Joe Bush, and your current assistant town manager, Leah Reinheimer, responded to this email complaint with another email from them, basically saying, I'll paraphrase it, but they were sorry. They didn't condone this behavior and apologized. Jason Smith never responded to that. In fact, Jason Smith never even opened his email account. Jason Smith opened his email account a very short time before this was filed, and it's been dormant ever since. I hope that kind of makes sense to you because it's kind of odd. I'm gonna go back now to the discipline to Josh. He was put on paid administrative leave on February 23rd. He was told to go home, not to, not to go back to the stations, not to go in town buildings or do anything until he was told again. On March 23rd, he was told to report to the town because they wanted to show him the paperwork and tell him why he was, why he was disciplined. When he read the paperwork, he noticed that it said that the complaint came on March 3rd. And when Josh told the assistant fire chief, "I don't get this because I was suspended on February 23rd, but the complaint came afterwards," and he said, "I'll get back to you." So they did get back to him. And what they said was, there was also an internal complaint, but that was not on the paperwork, and they didn't tell us who it was. That seemed odd to me. So the question I have, which I understand you can't answer, but I'd like you to ponder it. Does the town of Gilbert target people? Do they look at people's opinions? And when they get a complaint, do they vet it and do they verify it? Because this person lost his job partially due to the fact that he had this complaint. I appreciate the time that you gave me to do this, and I'll say this like I said last time, let your conscience be your guide. Please do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Steve Lavelle, followed by Stacy Lavelle.
I'm going to be taking Stacy's three minutes tonight, and hopefully it won't take me the whole way.
We need to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Yeah, I'm taking her time. Okay?
Okay.
So, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have listened to the early DE&amp;I team meetings through a FOIA request. They are quite painstaking. To think our taxpayer money is being spent on these types of meetings is mind-blowing. Let me start by saying the DE&amp;I team is a group-think-team. Prove me wrong. Every meeting I watched, there were zero conservative or opposing views. The team openly talked about their heavy, left-leaning, uniparty views. This philosophy breeds nothing but divisiveness and inequities, excuse me. It has brought dissension to your team and your work groups, and most of them will not speak up for fear of retaliation. So I am here to stand in the gap. Not all will agree with me, but many do, and they don't have a voice. So let's get it. In a meeting on January 4th, 2021, your chief people, People's Officer, Nathan Williams, I wish he was here, stated, quote, "DE&amp;I is minor in our organization because we are not a very diverse organization," end quote. What did he mean by that? If Nathan was here, I'd ask him, Nathan, are we, are we not diverse? Patrick, are we not diverse? Are we not diverse? Or is it because we all look the same, we're not diverse? Is Nathan making judgments based on color? Hmm. All right. Remember, this is the guy, along with Patrick Baner, that gave a hiring advantage to 28 people based on their race and their, and their gender. Also, if you recall, an HR person, I believe it to be Nathan Williams, and I know, I believe also, I don't know, I believe Bob Badger was in that room, told a room of firefighters who were preparing to do interviews with potential new candidates that we, meaning the town of Gilbert, are not looking for people who look like you. Is this DE&amp;I? Patrick, Councilmember Bouchel, if you guys are having a medical emergency, if you're stuck inside your house in a fire, do you really care what the person looks like if they show up? Do you care if it's a man or woman, black, white, gray? Or do you want them to be competent, capable, and qualified? That's a question. Back to the DE&amp;I meeting on January 4th. While discussing how some employees were not receptive to the idea of DE&amp;I, Tamika Hartman stated three times, three times in one minute, that she was okay with, quote, "Shove it down their throats," end quote. Oh, well, her boss, Nathan Williams, he didn't address this anger at all. I have the recording, and I can play it for you if you'd like. Tamika Hartman is the same town employee that the ODG team reached out to when discussing the video that my engineer did with a black firefighter about liking coffee like he likes, like he likes his firefighters, strong, bold, and black. Tamika called it egregious. I ask you, what is more egregious? Tamika Hartman saying, "We want to shove it down their throats," or an employee saying that he likes his coffee like he likes his firefighters? What's more humorous and lighthearted? The Baner dossier, the AKA Pierce Coleman report you put up on your code two weeks ago, where they stated that those comments were troubling on the surface, but were made in a joking manner. That's their report that you guys said. Rules for me, but not for thee. Just make it up as we go along, right? I didn't think it was a joke. She said it three times in a minute, and her boss did nothing. Let's look at the investigation into the coffee video. The Revolutionary HR Consulting Report finished on May 4th, 2022. I'll read a few excerpts. They interviewed the black firefighter in the video, I'm going to call him John Doe, along with me and two other employees who were working that day. I found it very interesting that Revolutionary HR Consulting, hired by you guys, clearly stated that John Doe identifies as a black and is the firefighter in the video at issue, who is preparing coffee, end quote. Funny thing, Revolutionary HR doesn't speak or mention how the other two employees identify, and nor did they say, "I identify as white." Is this DE&amp;I? Are those the firms we hire to do our investigations? John Doe, John Doe goes on to say that he agreed to do the video. This person received zero disciplinary action from the same video that my engineer was coerced and signed an NDA, and forced to sign an NDA into retirement. Nothing happened to the other guy, and it shouldn't have. It was a funny video. John Doe stated that he indeed felt very welcomed ever since his first day. Further stated that he had not observed or experienced any behavior from coworkers that was concerning to him. He also stated that he has no issues with my engineer's post and finds them humorous, entertaining, and not offensive. He claimed that he and my engineer are very close and have been since he was in the academy. This is what Revolutionary HR reported. Two months later, two weeks before my engineer's 20 years, they stick an NDA in front of his face and say, "Sign this, or you're fired." Is that DE&amp;I? And then not only that, it gets worse because then they try to write me up for saying black coffee and chase me the hell out of here. The ones leading the charge, besides Patrick Baner and Nathan Williams, of course, are Dana Birchman and Leah Reinheimer. Don't let her get out of this because you don't have any leaders in the fire department. Rob and Bob, they're nothing but yes-men, as mentioned earlier. I use that term loosely. Dana Birchman clearly identified herself on social media accounts as a chief digital officer for the town of Gilbert, and then posted things like this. NBC said, uh, 2016, "Who are the president-elect Trump's top picks? Dana Birchman. A bunch of old white guys, not interested." Is that DE&amp;I? Here's another post on 10/20/20, breaking, "Lawyers Say They Can't Find Parents of 545 Migrant Children Separated By The Trump Administration." Dana Birchman, "This is sickening. A disgrace for the current administration and for our country." And I'll be done here in just a second. How many times has Dana Birchman made a post about the open border and the immense amount of human trafficking and drug trafficking come across our open borders since 2021? How about the children being trafficked? How about these children right here? I feel bad for these people. All right? Her silence says it all. She is part of the Mockingbird Media, a former Hillary Clinton intern pushing the uniparty agenda right here in Gilbert, and you give her a taxpayer platform. And to be honest with you, your organization lacks complete leadership, and it's affecting the youth, which is even worse.
Next is Carissa, followed by Bill Conley.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Carissa, and some of you will remember me because I spoke about my daughter being sexually assaulted about four weeks ago at the town council meeting. It was hard to come back into the meeting just two weeks later and to hear Kathy's presentation to the mayor of the day, and just so casually speaking about teen teen violence and just giving statistics. And I have to say, I sat in the back of the room, and it hit my heart really hard. I also have been a victim of domestic violence, and hearing it spoken about so casually was completely uncalled for. Abuse perpetuates abuse. According to the Department of Justice, frequent exposure to violence in the home not only predisposes children to numerous social and physical problems, but it also teaches them that violence is the normal way of life. Therefore, increasing their risk of becoming society's next generation of victims and abusers. The abuser believes that the world revolves around them. They believe that they do no wrong, that they believe that their victims deserve the abuse or that they were justified in the actions that were taken to control their victims. They believe that they were justified in having their physical needs met, that their victims didn't have a right to say no. For the victims, they feel like they are the problem that deserves the beating or sexual assault that they are receiving. They wrestle with a wonder if they can survive and get through another day. They wonder if today will be the day that they end it all because it is too hard to continue surviving. They struggle with the fear of not knowing when the next verbal or physical altercation will happen. They struggle with the fear of not knowing if that altercation will land them in the hospital or in a grave. It is a daily fight to having to comply with their abuser just to survive. When they finally find freedom, it is learning how to navigate a new world, a new world where you have to thrive and make decisions but doubt that you will make the right ones. Your self-confidence has been so shredded that you no longer believe in yourself. It is constantly watching your back and always questioning if your friend, coworker, classmate, or partner will have your best interests at heart, or will they take advantage of you just as has been happened to you in the past. It is a simple tap on your shoulder from a friend or family member that causes you to jump because you didn't know, you don't know what you will meet when you turn around. It is the fear that one night, they will enter your home uninvited. It is the fear that on that one night, you may have to use the weapon you keep by your bedside to take a life that you never wanted to take just so you can survive. So many wonder why people stay in abusive relationships, but they don't understand that it is not always easy just to walk away. They don't understand that the victim can't always see the abuse, that the victim has been brainwashed into believing that they are the problem and they deserve the pain that has been inflicted on them. They don't understand that sometimes the victim stays just to survive, that walking out that door may be the last step they take. Domestic violence is not something to smile about. It's not something to casually present in a proclamation for mayor of the day. It is not something that is easy to walk through or to get out of. It is something that causes trauma and can last for a lifetime.
Thank you. Bill Conley.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak. Gosh, I promised I wasn't going to get emotional, but I sure did. So I've written something down on my phone, so I gotta be that guy reading off the phone. It's quite small, I can't see. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you for lighting the tower. That's very much appreciated. The invocation, I don't know if she's here anymore.
She's gone.
She's gone. Okay, well, thank you for giving that invocation. At 12% of the population of Gilbert, I will learn more about that faith because I just want to educate myself and learn more. The Green Program, have you guys left as well? He hasn't. Right on. That's awesome. I mean, I'm so appreciative of those businesses. I cannot wait to go to, was it Guadalajara? What is it again? What is it? Galapagos. Oh, yeah. I'm going there tomorrow and get some treats. I'm sure it's going to look good on me. So I appreciate you guys recognizing them. The family of the, of the daughter. I worked at Freestone Rec Center for about a year and a half. I personally witnessed so many issues with electric bikes. For what it's worth, I support you in that. I want to miss, is it Bookley or Buckley? Buckley? I just want to recognize you. From a few meetings ago, we were talking about the team, the teen Subcommittee on Violence, and besides, besides some others, you really impressed me by your emotions and how heartfelt you were. And for what it's worth, it's above my pay grade, I'm just asking that if there can be any kind of consideration, I and many others would love for you to be involved in the Subcommittee for Teen Violence. I think you would offer a lot of value. Uh, I think you would offer a lot of value. So, you know, as they say, you know, noodle on that, right? Uh, so let me get to this, uh, here. I just wanted to share with you, um, oh my God, I'm almost out of time. Okay. I, uh, I've lost my enthusiasm. I mean, I, I'm worn down. One of the parents of the, of the suspects, uh, called me, uh, through, uh, I hesitate to say anything, but let's just say that one of the parents called me under the ruse of talking about a career opportunity, and they wanted me to come and meet him. I put it off. I'm, I'm officially scared. I'm officially worn down. So just quickly, uh, in an effort of what the community can do, a few weeks ago at the meeting, uh, the community, community forum, I'll be so fast, guys, um, here's a few things, uh, that we can do just at home to start, right? Make sure your home is lighted. Make sure you have, uh, your gates locked on the side. Make sure you have motion detector lights on the side. Post signs telling ever people that your, uh, your property is under surveillance. Get to know your neighbors. Go get to know them, right? I mean, I was amazed over the weekend of, of how much I've been missing. Get to know all the friends of your kids and get to know their parents. That turns out that that was one of the hardest ones to do because there's divorce and they're not like you, Dad, they don't want to meet you, whatever. But, uh, anyway, I gotta go. But I, I just, just would encourage everyone to try to take control. Um, you guys have a job to do. It's very difficult, and I understand, and we can't rely on you to be the knight in shining armor. But there's a lot the community can do just to start by protecting our homes and getting out of our community. So thank you guys very much. I'm sorry for going over.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you all for your comments, Mayor. That concludes the communications.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now I would like to-
Mayor? I could, please.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Sarah and Daniel, um, pictures of your daughter broke my heart, and I spoke with Chris Payne, our attorney, earlier in the week. He's looking into, um, potential ordinances. If he gives us the go-ahead and says we could do something like this, then, um, I'll make sure that, um, I asked several of my council members to, um, get this important issue on the agenda.
At this time, at this time, I would like to invite Assistant Chief Segley to give us an update from the Gilbert Police Department. Chief?
There we go. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and our Gilbert community. Jim B. Segley, Assistant Chief of Police here in Gilbert. On behalf of Chief Solberg, thank you for allowing me a few moments tonight to talk about teen violence. Before I share tonight's comments, I'm going to take a minute to read from a statement Chief Solberg provided AZ Central several weeks ago. He provided this statement when the newspaper first shared their intention to write a story tying race into some recent arrests on teen violence. We want to categorically, categorically deny any insinuation that race plays a role in any arrest in Gilbert. Arrests are only made as new information becomes available and probable cause is established. Our primary focus is justice for all victims, the safety of our community, and to put those responsible behind bars. To suggest otherwise is irresponsible, disgraceful, and disheartening. The public should know the facts, which are the Gilbert Police did not share the mugshots that were published by the media. In the cases of Christopher Fantastick and Eris Aradondo, these mugshots were released by the agency involved and responsible for booking and processing those individuals brought into its custody. It should be noted that two individual juveniles were also arrested within the same 24 hours. As you may be aware, information involving juvenile arrest records are not releasable due to the restrictions outlined in Arizona law, unless and until the county attorney prosecutes the juveniles as an adult. The only mugshots released by Gilbert P D on January 30th, 2024, and January 31st, 2024, were that of Travis Renner and Kira Holzapel, because those arrests were processed in Gilbert through the Gilbert Chandler Unified Holding Facility. I also want to make you aware of something in our community called doxing. Some people in our community are posting incorrect information regarding addresses of alleged suspects. In fact, we recently learned someone posted what they believe was an address of a suspect, but the person no longer lived at that address. As a result of this and other incidents of doxing, innocent Gilbert residents with no connections to any teen violence are being threatened and harassed. Those individuals reached out to the Gilbert Police Department, and we've made one arrest related to doxing and there are other investigations pending. Let me be very clear. Posting this inaccurate information is irresponsible and puts innocent lives at stake and will not be tolerated by the Gilbert Police Department. With these facts in mind, respectfully, I would like to shift our focus back to where it belongs this evening. First and foremost, I want to thank our community for coming out tonight. Your input ideas and your voices are heard. We have 26 arrests since January of this year and 41 total group teen violence arrests made since February of 2022, and I could assure you more arrests are coming. Today, we were able to make another arrest stemming from new evidence discovered in January of this year while reviewing an associated case. This new evidence pertains to an assault that took place in September of 2023 that was previously unreported to the Gilbert Police Department. In this new case today, a female juvenile was arrested and charged with aggravated robbery, assault, and disorderly conduct. These charges are being referred to the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. We also want to thank our community for continuing to provide us with valuable information. Last week during Chief Solberg's media briefing, we once again came to our community asking for help. We came to our community asking for help identifying people involved in these violent acts. Thank you to everybody that responded with helpful information that will aid us in bringing justice to all of our victims. Many of these recent arrests are a direct result of new information that has been provided to us and shared with us. Please, for an up-to-date listing of people we are trying to identify, whether it's a photo or a video, please visit our teen violence website. As a reminder, Monday, the 26th, at 6:00 P. M., as we already said, our next meeting of the teen violence Subcommittee will be held at the Southeast Regional Library. We look forward to continuing this dialogue with our community and working together. In the meantime, please, our residents and businesses should be confident in knowing that the safety of the Gilbert community is the number one priority. By continuing to work together, we will bring justice to our victims and ensure Gilbert remains one of the best towns to live in, thrive in, and be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief B. Segley. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, which is the consent calendar. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a request to pull two items, item number five and item number 14. With that, I'll move approval of items two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, and 16.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. Motion passes 6-0. They were even able to change your name in the order that we sit in. That's great. Our old system, we couldn't do that, though. This is wonderful to have this opportunity. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Item five, Councilman Torgerson.
Is there anyone in staff that's available to explain the scope of these license plate readers?
Assistant Chief Segley, round two.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, uh, currently we have 25 license plate readers positioned around town, uh, mostly by the Santan Mall and the exits and entrances to the highway. Does that answer your question, sir?
No, I just wanted to see what kind of information gathering is going with that, because it's putting everybody that's out there is subject to being scanned.
Yeah, it's ju- it's just capturing the license plate, um, and if a car is entered as stolen somewhere, or if a, uh, let's say, another agency that shares information is looking for a car for a homicide or another crime, they could enter that into the system. Essentially, though, once the plate runs through the license plate reader, it gives an alert, and the officer, he or she that gets behind the car, if they are able to, needs to verify all that stuff before enforcement action is taken. The data is stored for, uh, 30 days.
Thank you, Assistant Chief B. Segley. Oh, Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, Chief, our Assistant Chief. Technology isn't 100%, so have you had false reads? And if so, what's happened from them?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's one of the, uh, interesting things with the software is that the, uh, if you get a read and it's false, you can tell the software that it's false and it's continuously learning, trying to get better. Uh, but like I said before, the, the most important thing to understand with this is a- after the plate comes through, if we are able to find the car, all that verification needs to be done by a human, eyes on, he or she in a squad car, identifying the plate, making sure what it was entered in the system for is accurate before any enforcement action's taken.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Yeah, um, for the council members, we had a long discussion about this when this was first brought, first brought to our attention, because we were, had, I think, some of the same concerns that you're probably having, but we really vetted it at that time. I hope that makes you feel more comfortable. Would anyone like to make a motion? I'll move to approve item five. I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, second by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. Motion passes 5-1. Moving on to the next item, Vice Mayor?
Item 14, Councilmember Torgerson.
I would just love somebody from staff to come up, and this is more of a, uh, to show exactly how this works for the public, because as running an enterprise system, this shows how it works in so many ways. Is anybody available to make a quick? Ah, there she is.
Budget guru, Kelly Fost.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, item number 14 is an internal loan with the Environmental Service or Solid Waste Residential Fund, the Residential Trash Fund. We, uh, spoke with you when we were building the budget and at the financial retreats that the rates that were planned would need to be earlier in the year if we were to get enough money to stay above minimum fund balance in this fund, but that creates some difficulty with having the water rates later and the residential rates earlier. So in order to maintain the same timeline for both of them, um, this fund would need an internal loan of about $1.5 million. So this document would allow the general fund to send some money over to stay above minimum fund balance in that area. The rates were designed to be able to pay back this loan, uh, with interest to the, uh, general fund over the next four or five years. Uh, and so we don't subsidize the trash fund. All of the rate revenue will go to pay the service and repay this loan, just like any, uh, business, um, that had a, a cash flow need would need to repay that loan.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate your time. Can I get a motion for this item, please?
I move to accept item number 14.
Can you turn your microphone on, please? That's okay. Thank you.
Uh, make a motion to accept item 14, budget consideration, considering adoption of resolution number 445, 45.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Anderson. Please vote. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda, we have two items on our public hearing agenda this evening. I have no slips for anyone wishing to speak. We had no comment online on either of these items. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone on the dais have any comments, questions, concerns? One's a liquor license and one is a zoning text amendment that we discussed during a study session two weeks ago. I see none, so I'll close the public hearing and ask if someone would like to make a motion on item 17 and 18. And it would be as easy as that. Move to approve.
I move to approve public hearing items 17 and 18.
Good job. Can I have a second?
You beat me to it, I'll second it.
Oh. And Councilmember Buckley beat you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to our administrative items, we have three items on our administrative agenda this evening. Consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the second quarter of FY 2024. Does anyone need a, are we having a presentation on this item? Does anyone need a presentation on this item? Would someone like to make a motion for this item?
I'd make a motion to accept administrative item number 19.
I have a motion from Councilmember Torgerson.
I have a second.
Seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. See how easy motions are when you get used to them? Councilmember Buckley? You might have pressed too early. It, it takes a second to circle. It is, uh, passes 6-0. Moving on to item number two, council administration, discussion impossible action related to the status update from the Council Subcommittee on Teen Violence. Vice Mayor?
I'll just take a, a moment and have my colleagues, uh, express some of their thoughts also. Um, it, it's too bad that the people this relates to have left and don't get to hear the report. Our next meeting is scheduled, as Assistant Chief said, next Monday night at the library, the Southeast Regional Library at 6:00, and we hope to have the, the, them present. Uh, we've been doing our homework on various items, and I'll let the two of them talk about what they've been working on, but I had a very productive meeting with a, um, resident in the community that had a suggestion about creating, uh, or using what is an existing, uh, structure within our organization, which is each of us, or some of us have responsibilities as liaisons to school districts. And it's a wonderful opportunity to maybe expand that. I remember when I was a liaison with Higley, I just met with the superintendent. But there's an opportunity to expand that, maybe have principals involved, teachers involved, students, parents, uh, in some way to discuss issues, and, um, she's very interested in being a, using that as a vehicle to communicate with their, uh, their parents in the district when they are aware of something happening, um, some danger in the community or something that may affect their children, that they can, we can quickly respond to that in some way and notify. But, um, the, she used the, um, East Valley Partnership as kind of a, the, um, that structure to the same type of idea where we bring communities together. But, uh, I thought that was a great idea and something we should explore. One thing I'm interested in doing, possibly after the next meeting, is, um, compiling these, uh, recommendations that we've been working on and come up with an actual plan to, of recommendation to the council, because I think it's close to time to do that. Um, we've had a lot of work that we've been doing, and we can show some success stories, and I think we ought to take the time to do that, uh, after our next meeting. So I'll turn it over to, uh, either one of you two, if you have anything you want to add.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni already has his mic on, so-
Um, our nobrassknuckles.org is approaching 2,000 signatures. We're at 1,900 right now. So if you haven't, um, done that yet and you feel the need to, the urge to want to do this with us, it's nobrassknuckles.org. Um, I want to thank staff for working, um, with me and the outside vendor to identify schools that will be participating in the AYS, uh, survey. Um, I met this week with a, a group of people, most of them are here. Um, they called themselves Project Lily, and they started to organize, um, uh, with Katie and with a gentleman by the name of Eric, um, who, um, uh, was a gang member, and he has pretty much devoted his life to talk to kids, uh, about, kids and parents, about, um, his life and, and how, what he needed from his parents and didn't get. And so they're, um, starting to organize a large workshop, and, um, Eric and I spoke about, uh, doing some, um, Zoom meetings for parents in elementary schools. Um, also, there's been some discussion from the community wanting to set up a, kind of a, a mobile block watch. So I've been, um, you know, interacting with staff and the chief to see, we already have some programs already in, um, uh, are already working for, um, block watches and just see how we can, if we can make those kind of mobile. if we can make those kind of mobile. Let me see. And also, the community has asked me to invite some town council members and school boards to our next, our next meeting on the twenty-sixth. So I've done that, and they'll have to figure out amongst themselves who will attend that. That's all I have to report.
Councilmember Torgerson?
Well, Chuck should get a little orange cape or something, because if something comes in front of him. He's, he's taken this bull by the horns in a lot of ways. And I wanted to thank Dawn Prince, because making sure that we're not stepping over each other as each one of us tries to reach out to someone. And she's taken that, that responsibility to make sure that we're not belaboring people with multiple requests from different councilmen. And really, Chuck's pretty much said it all.
Thank you. Councilmember Bon Giovanni, were you referring to inviting other council members from this council or from other cities and towns?
From other cities, like maybe one, one or two from each city. I've asked them that they can choose which ones they, they want to participate or just come to the meeting. Because I want them, I want them to hear some of the ideas. The community has had some great ideas, so I want them to hear those, those ideas.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, because I wasn't clear what you were stating, so I just wanted to make sure for the audience that's out there and listening, or will be tuning in later, they'll understand that. Councilmember Kaprowski?
Has the subcommittee received suggestions that relate to targeted outreach or education to pre-teens?
Yeah. Most of the things we're talking about right now is for elementary school parents, elementary school-aged children, yes.
Great, and so we might be hearing some of those solutions soon?
What's amazing to me is Melanie Dykstra came and made a presentation to us at one of our meetings, and it's pretty amazing what we already do in the community. And I think we need to make sure that we express that, that there are programs that we are running now that address a lot of these issues.
I think that's one thing that's been said, is that there are, there are other things going on that we didn't even know about, that were going on. And so it's hard to get the information out to two hundred and eighty-eight thousand people when the seven of us may not even know these things are going on behind the scenes, because there's so much going on in this town every single day. And I wanted to be clear about who was, who you were inviting to the subcommittee meeting, because an invitation was offered to Councilmember Buckley tonight, and I didn't want her to feel uncomfortable. Because of the structure of the subcommittee and how this works, only three of you can be members of it.
Right.
And so we run into a situation of that, and we knew that, and we talked about that when we set the subcommittee up, so.
Can I, can I ask, maybe Chris can answer this. Can Bobby or anyone else attend but not participate? Attend? Could we notice it?
I think we run into a gray area of four of you being in the room while the discussions are happening.
It's, it's the last couple of meetings, they've all been pretty much publicized live. I mean, any one of you guys can watch it, too.
Have they been live?
Yeah, live, so it's not like it's a big secret.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, and Town Council, the answer is yes, but it's, it's discouraged from a legal standpoint, because it may give the appearance that there is a breach of an open meeting law, that there's a conversation that may happen among four, five, or the majority of the council members. So certainly, that's the right to do so, and a council member could attend, but it's something you need to be very careful of, that you, if a council member that's not on the subcommittee is there, you would have to be very careful to not talk to the council members, or at least give the appearance that you are, because people may think you're having a larger conversation.
And I, I think we're, we're getting close to maybe handing it to a, a subcommittee recommending that. I just want to wait till we got some of the ideas scheduled and running and, you know, build from there.
Yeah, I totally agree, and I think we talk about this a lot, it's perception versus reality sometimes. And I think it's hard that if you're sitting in a room, you're sitting in a room at a table, and one of us is in the room, you might even refer to us. And that gets to be kind of sticky. So it's easier, like Chris said, just to avoid the situation? I just wanted to comment on that, because I know you're called out.
I will, I will promise to ignore Bobby totally if she wants to come, so.
And that's not the way it should work either, but it's, it's, you know, we're human, and, and that's your natural instinct is to do that when someone's in the room with you, and so it gets to be. So again, perception versus reality. Vice Mayor, did you have something else?
Just to add, to follow up with the Councilmember Bon Giovanni, is we are very close, and that's why I said I'd like to get to a point where we can actually provide to the council recommended actions that we can take, and recommended actions we can pass on to the Community Engagement Task Force, because we've talked all along that they probably need to get involved at some point.
And just as a follow-up to continue that conversation, if we do choose to engage the Community Engagement Task Force, their numbers have been dwindling, so we may need to appoint more members to that. I know they had, they're struggling with attendance and having a quorum, so just keep that in the back of your head as you're moving forward. And the lighting of the water tower, I wanted to be clear, because I know people will go back and watch this, so they can use my words. There is no power to the water tower right now because of the construction, and our team has found a mechanism to get power to the water tower so that it can be lit orange for tonight and for tomorrow night. We can't guarantee that power can stay on. Each time the power goes off to the water tower, they have to literally reprogram the whole LED system, from what I understand. And so I just wanted to be super clear that that's why we've struggled with how to get the water tower back on. And the rain last week set us back a little bit, because it became a, as you can imagine, a muddy mess in there. So our team has done a great job, and, and thank you again to Warming and Mark Taylor Construction for that, too. And it, it wasn't just an easy solution of going and turning it orange, unfortunately. It's just weird timing, let's say, this weird timing, so. If you hear of any events, I think some are getting, and this was my point at the last meeting, I think some of you are getting invitations to attend things that the rest of us were not getting to attend, and that makes it difficult, too. Because obviously, the public is seeing one thing, and we're experiencing something else on this side. Anything else on the subcommittee? Great job, thank you. Thanks for the update. Moving on to our next item, council administration, consider discussion and possible, consider discussion and possible action on revision amendment or appeal of the Ethics Handbook and our Code of Conduct. We had a study session on this item earlier. Based on that discussion, would anybody like to attempt a motion? Or do we want to have more discussion on it now? Oh, Councilmember Kaprowski, I was hoping I would see you turn your mic on.
Per our discussion during the study session earlier, I would like to, I move to postpone this item to the first meeting in April, to give staff time to prepare some revisions to the Code of Conduct that would add in some of the penalties for misconduct, and then be able to give a presentation at that time for our consideration and discussion.
So continuation to the first meeting in April?
I'll second that. Is that a motion?
Is everybody good with that? So we have a motion from Councilmember Kaprowski to continue to the first meeting in April. A second by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, please vote. Motion passes six zero. Great resolution on that, I believe. Next, policy items. Do I have any policy items to discuss? Seeing none. Future meetings, any future meetings that we would like to discuss? Seeing none. Communications, report from the town manager who has laryngitis.
Mayor, council members, nothing tonight, thank you.
That's good, because that's hard to get through when you have laryngitis. Report from the council on current events, or any events. Councilmember Buckley, I'm counting on you.
Oh, well, I have no report to liven everybody up tonight, so you're gonna have to wait till the next meeting.
What? I'm shocked, because you've been doing a report every meeting. Councilmember Bon Giovanni, next up.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Rocky and the team. Gilbert Outdoor Expo, put on your camouflage and boots and head over to Gilbert Outdoor Expo on February twenty-seventh, from nine AM to two PM at the Repair and Preserve at Water Ranch. Go fishing, explore wildlife, climb on the rock wall, and much more. This event is free, no, this, this free event is sure to be something the whole family can enjoy. But there's more. Concert in the Park. Grab a basket, grab a blanket, a basket. Grab a blanket or lawn chair and meet us in downtown Gilbert this spring for our free concerts in the park. Concerts will take place in a new temporary location in the green space just south of the canal at the Heritage Marketplace and just north of Bario Queen. Every Thursday in March, performances will run from six thirty PM to eight thirty PM. Thank you.
I was like, where are we gonna do? Concerts in the park? We don't have a park. Councilmember Torgerson?
It's kind of hard to follow that up, you know? It just is. But wait, there's more. Tomorrow night here, the Redevelopment Commission will convene. The agenda includes a study session for a bowling and restaurant concept and a public hearing for bottled blonde. But wait, there is more. If you act next, next Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, a public meeting will be held at six PM at Freestone Recreation Center in the Assembly Room for the Northwest Gilbert revitalization efforts. Please join this public meeting and provide feedback on where Gilbert should focus its revitalization efforts and what outcomes you want to see from revitalization of the most mature area in the community. If you're unable to attend, an online form will be available after the meeting at www.gilbertaz.gov/nwgilbert. But I do encourage you to attend, because it, it will be, it's the future of our town. Please.
No more, and there's more, wait, there's more at that point?
But wait, there's no more? No, wait, there is more from the mayor.
No, actually, Councilmember Kaprowski?
Hi, everyone. I wanted to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year. The town of Gilbert is sister cities with LaShawn, China, and the Lunar New Year began on February tenth and lasts for two weeks. This is the Year of the Dragon, which is the only mythical creature in the zodiac, symbolizing power, luck, and innovation. So I hope that this Year of the Dragon brings everyone in Gilbert an extra touch of magic, and everyone prosperity, health, and opportunities for growth. And I have one more announcement. This week is also Engineers Week, celebrated nationally, and as a, from one civil engineer to all the engineers that are in the town of Gilbert that are helping us, you know, keep our town running, and all of the people having a great quality of life, just want to say Happy Engineers Week. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anything else from council members? Seeing none? Now it's my turn. Wait, there's more. And I see the slides coming up on the screen. I'll see which slide comes up first, so that I know which order. Okay, so we have a food drive going on right now, a community-wide food drive until February twenty-sixth, so you'll have till this weekend. To scan that code and make sure you're getting your donations out, there are lots of locations to donate to. There is a great need within our community, and like I said, all the information there is at that, if you scan that code. And these are all the locations that are collecting donations this month. I didn't realize you had that slide, too. That's a good one, yeah, thank you. On next, we have the Community Needs Assessment Survey that is going until tomorrow. If you scan this code, please fill out our Community Needs Assessment, and you could be entered to win one of four fifty-dollar Visa gift cards. Thank you. Next, we have our Military Tribute Banners Program through our Veterans Advisory Board. Each year, they'll be running this as a fundraiser and a way to pay tribute to our own heroes right here in downtown Gilbert. If you purchase your banner by March thirty-first, it will be hung in the Heritage District in May around Memorial Day and in November around Veterans Day. And in Gilbert, we do love our veterans. So this is a way for you to pay, a pay honor to your military hero right here in your hometown. And supporters can pay this year online through our Town of Gilbert store, which is a new option and very much appreciated. Next. Next, we cordially invite you to meet and greet with the new commander for the Arizona, USS Arizona SSN eight oh three, Commander Thomas Deegan. Will be here at Town Hall on Friday, March first, for an opportunity for the public to come and meet with him. He's a very nice man. I had the opportunity to meet him in December in Washington, DC. And I welcome all of you to come and attend this event to get to know him. For those that don't realize, the town of Gilbert is the host town for the USS Arizona submarine that is currently under construction. We're excited to be able to participate in that. I think that's all my slides, right? One other thing that I wanted to mention, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Kaprowski for, was the Gilbert Symphony. So I attended the Gilbert Symphony a couple, two weeks ago, two weeks ago tomorrow, and they finally were able to put on their hundred-year celebration, because our hundredth birthday got interrupted in twenty-twenty with the pandemic. And they were so close to having that hundredth celebration in March of that year, and the event was canceled. And they did an amazing job. Big thank you to Dr. Martin Province, the conductor, and seventy-five volunteer members of that symphony orchestra. They had two live singers come out and did a sing-along with the audience, and it was just an amazing evening. So thank you to Councilmember Kaprowski and the sponsors that are sponsoring that. And I wanted to tell you that a lady came over to me during the break and thanked us and the town's part for this event, because she said, "Every other city in town around us has a symphony." I don't know if that's true, but every other town has a symphony, and she was grateful to have it in Gilbert.
Absolutely. And the website is gilbertsymphony.org. Our VIP sponsor is Bush Tex, but we are currently seeking additional sponsors and community donors. If you're interested, all the information is there. And all the photos from that event are actually on the Gilbert Flickr page. And they played a John Williams song at the end, and the conductor came out with a jacket and a hat, and a lot of the players were wearing cowboy hats, and it was just very Gilbert and fun, so you can see those pictures if you'd like on that site.
And it was a dementia-friendly event. And so it was, that was proud, too. Councilmember Bon Giovanni, did you have a comment?
A great event with no strings attached.
Dollar in the jar upstairs, bad puns. And I wanted to thank my aide, Kirsten Morgan, and all of the staff here in Gilbert that helped put on Student Government Day last week. We had forty-four students from sixteen high schools, forty-four students from sixteen high schools that came in and shadowed our team members, shadowed the member, a member from the Chamber of Commerce, and they all then got to come here and participate in a mock council meeting. And Kirsten and I actually played residents during communications from citizens. It's all therapy. And it was a wonderful day and such a great opportunity for our high school students to find opportunities that they'd be able to have a future job right here in their communities, because if you ask students, they think the only thing we have in Gilbert are police officers, firefighters, and garbage truck drivers. And so they learned that there are a lot more. There are engineers, there are water specialists, there are managers and attorneys and clerks, and they don't have that opportunity to learn that. So it's great for future workforce development for our community. So thank, big thank you to Kirsten for that, because she really carries a heavy load on that event. And thank you to council members Buckley and Tilke and Kaprowski for stopping by and participating with the students that day, too. They loved the opportunity. And just one last Parks and Rec thing, for the fifth year in a row, Cactus Yards boasts the title of Outstanding Park of the Year. So way to go on that, Cactus Yards and Parks and Rec. And that's all I have. I move to adjourn. Are we doing that yet? I move to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.